Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 22 meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to observe a moment of silence in memory of Councilmember Tom Glancy, who passed away last Friday after a courageous battle with cancer. Our thoughts and prayers are with his wife Karen and the entire Glancy family at this difficult time. So I'm going to ask, after the Pledge of Allegiance, that we stand for a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible)
We are definitely going to miss Tom Glancy. Can I have the city clerk please do the roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bill de la Peña?
Present.
Mayor Irwin?
Present. Request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. Agenda item 9D will be heard out of order and will be the first department report. And now we are going to have our special presentations. We have three this evening, and I will walk up to the podium. In our first presentation, we're very proud to recognize and congratulate the always amazing young women at Lorraine. This time it is their mock trial team, who along with their coaches and teachers for outstanding achievement in winning the 2012 California State Mock Trial Championship. I would like to welcome Elizabeth Hochlauchers, Mock Trial Advisor, and she is going to introduce members of the winning team, and I will present them with accommodation.
Thank you, Mayor Irwin. And I don't think I need this. Hi, everyone. I'd like to say that it is an honor for me as well to be involved with this group of girls and in an activity that is unique, like ours, in which professionals, teachers, and students collaborate together to create a project, which they then present in competition with other teams around the county, and then around the state, and then around the nation, and in our case, from around the world. And it's through these unions of teachers, the professional attorneys, and the students that brings all of this educational value to these girls. A lot of our girls are missing today because they missed AP exams for the national championship, so they're home studying for tomorrow's makeup AP exams. But we do have one of our attorney coaches here, Kendall Jones. We also have...[287.83][287.83](Applause). Aside from Kendall, we have three other attorney coaches on our team, Ron Bamier. We have Jean Wentz and Rick Wentz, and Rick is the gentleman who coaches our pre-trial students, and so they give the appellate arguments before the trial begins. Then we also have a former student of mine who was on the 2008 state championship team and was on our national team that year, and who received a commendation in that year from our Thousand Oaks City Council. And now she's on our team. She was this year while she sat out from her graduation from Berkeley in anticipation of law school, so now she's attending Georgetown next year, and that's Niantar Abushan.[338.62][338.62](Applause). So there we go, one, two, three, four, five professionals, plus me, and plus the kids. So our seniors are Olivia Polk... Why don't you come up here, Olivia? And Hannah Young, our two seniors.[358.02][358.02](Applause). Followed by, we have actually three freshmen in a row. Ally's Lackett.[369.02][369.02](Applause). Come on, come on, come on, come on. Freshmen, they don't know what to do. Come on, Ally.[376.83][376.83](Laughter). And our sophomore representative tonight, Camilla Hemady.[395.27][395.27](Applause). This activity prepares these young women in ways that I think you can't even really imagine. In one trial this year, any one of these students might be an attorney. The next trial, there might not be the right role for that child, and they might be the hairdresser, which is what really happened to one of our kids this year. And these kids learn to work with all kinds of personality types because they've got all of the adults to deal with. They learn to work collaboratively as a team, and they also... They're just so prepared for whatever the world is going to throw at them after they get out of high school. I was going to say more, but I'll get too emotional. Okay. So they're ready to take it on. Okay. I have an accommodation here in honor of Lorraine High School Mock Trial Team, and this is on behalf of the entire city council. Thank you.[461.46][461.46](Applause).
Why don't we have you two hold it? Turn around for a picture.
Can I just say one more thing? I want to thank so much our city council for every time recognizing our group, and we felt so well supported by our town and by our state when we were announced last month. It was really a great feeling. Thank you so much for taking the time.
We're very proud of our community. Our second presentation recognizes the city's Municipal Service Center, who was awarded the Cal OSHA Golden Gate Certificate for exemplary safety practices and commitment to health and safety in the workplace. Kevin Fishman, the city's Health and Safety Specialist, will present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, management, staff, good evening. The Cal OSHA Consultation Golden Gate Safety Award recognizes high-hazard employers for establishing and maintaining an effective injury and illness prevention program, along with also developing and maintaining a health and safety management system. Well over a decade ago, the Municipal Service Center established a relationship with Cal OSHA Consultation. As a result, the past three years, they've received this award now twice. The dedication of which the Municipal Service Center does give the men and women and staff when it comes to safety is truly essential to not only for them to go ahead and show up to work and perform the daily operations of which they do, but essentially it's performing and providing the services that the community well-deserves. So again, Madam Mayor, Council, management, staff, we do want to say congratulations to the MSC, congratulations to the city, and congratulations to you, Madam Mayor.[666.32][666.32](Applause).
And our last presentation, we are honoring the Thousand Oaks Police Department's outstanding service to children and youth. The department received the 2012 Youth Outreach Award by the California Congress of Parent, Teachers, and Students, and Thousand Oaks Police Captain Jim Freihoff is here to talk about this outstanding award and the police department's outreach to youth in our community.[710.82][710.82](Applause).
Thank you, Mayor Irwin, council members, city staff. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks Police Department and the Chief of Police of Thousand Oaks as well, we graciously accept this award. We make it a priority to talk to the youth about choices that they make and emphasize that the choices they make are going to be with them forever, good and bad. Most importantly, we understand that most children are good kids, but they're all one bad choice away from a disaster. So we take pride in the award, we make it our priority to keep our youth safe here, and we're very thankful for the California Congress of Parents and Teachers and Students to recognize our efforts.
Next, we have public comments, and can I have the city clerk please announce?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Ten people have presented cards and presented to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Our first speaker, P.W. Paz. Oh. There.[865.23][865.23](Applause).
All right. Madam Mayor, council members, it's my privilege to introduce to you tonight P.W. Paz, Ambassador for the Public Works Week celebration that we're currently underway with at our Municipal Service Center. We've had our open house, first day today, we have one tomorrow. A lot of school-age kids and groups have come through to see and witness what we do every day, Public Works, to make our city so great. P.W. Paz, do you have anything to say? Now, he has trouble speaking, so I don't think the mic will pick him up, so I'm going to just listen to him, and I'll relate to everybody. He says he's very happy to be here tonight. He wants you to know that he actually can do things. Show us what you can do, P.W. He can... What are you doing? Oh, he can wink his eye. There you go. This is kind of like Disneyland, you know? I think he can wiggle his ears.[951.00][951.00](Laughter). His tail wags, he's got a tail. Okay. But he's a real hit with the kids, and we're happy to have him. Actually, can... I'll make sure that we pan back, TOTV, and there he is. Okay. There he is. Wave to the viewing audience there, P.W. Okay. Anything else you want to say? He's hot, so...[982.63][982.63](Laughter). He's getting hot in there. Actually, thank you to Tony Ravelis, one of our street maintenance workers, for coming down and for sharing with the kids during Public Works Week at the MSC. Again, he's a real hit with the kids, and again, it's all about sharing the good work that we do in Public Works for our city. So, P.W., thanks for coming down tonight.[1004.00][1004.00](Applause).
All right, Mr. Spurgeon, you're up again. And you are... Maybe you can also tell the viewing public how they can get... I don't know if you mentioned that already. How can they find out more about Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, to find out more about Public Works Week and to... Even now, I think you can get in for a tour. We have a few slots open tomorrow, but you would call 449-2499 at our Municipal Service Center. Again, 449-2499, and you can talk to our staff there about coming out and joining in to the open house, so. I have another person to introduce to you tonight, Cliff Finley. Not quite as dynamic as P.W. Paz, I'm afraid, but, you know, he is an engineer, so... But Cliff is our new Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer, and it's with great pleasure that I introduce you... him to you tonight. Cliff comes to us from the county of Ventura most recently, but he was the Public Works Director for the City of Santa Paula. He was a city engineer in the city of Port Oneimi, and he was in private practice prior to that with a private consulting firm. So it's... I'm very pleased to have Cliff join our Public Works family and just delighted to have him on board. And Cliff, you want to say hi?
Madam Mayor, council members, good evening. It's a pleasure to be at the premier city of Thousand Oaks, and I'm glad to be a member of your Public Works team. Thank you.
And welcome.
He can't wiggle his ears, though, sorry. But, okay.
Thank you. Our third speaker this evening is Captain Jim Freihoff from the Police Department.
Madam Mayor, council, thank you very much. Captain James Freihoff, city resident, Simi Valley. I spoke earlier to some people about some recent thefts that we've seen, an increase in thefts from vehicles, vehicle burglaries, and residential burglaries out of open garages. These are largely preventable if people just take the time to please bring in their property, secure it, lock their vehicles and their homes, and to prevent this theft. Most of these are crimes of opportunity, and given the opportunity, there are people that will take advantage of that. I would also like to take this opportunity to let people know that we are putting out a traffic trailer sign that will indicate in the major thoroughfares that we have seen an increase in thefts, to please extra... You know, be careful and lock your doors and keep your valuables out of your vehicles. And also, for those who haven't taken the opportunity to either sign up for City Watch, which is our community-based communication from our Crime Prevention Bureau via email, which they can sign up for on the TOOx.org website, as well as VC Alert. VC Alert is the reverse notification system, which we use for emergencies, but you can also opt-in for community messages as well. And that's also found at the TOOx.org website under the Residence section. They can go to find the additional information. And we encourage people to please sign up for it, not just for the emergency alerts, but also for the community bulletin, so we can advise the public of issues that we're seeing or things that we want them to look out for. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Freihoff. Cheryl Johnson?
Good evening, Ms. Johnson. Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Irwin, and good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Cheryl Johnson, resident of Camarillo. And as a city employee, I wanted to first offer my personal heartfelt condolences to the Glancy family. Councilmember Glancy was a big supporter of various city programs and activities, and he was really an advocate for many charitable causes, and he will be missed. So it's with pleasure that I'm here this evening to share information about the upcoming Community Safety Wellness Day event, which will be held on Wednesday, June 20, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it will be in the park in front of the Civic Arts Plaza. The City of Thousand Oaks and Caneo Recreation and Park District have partnered together to offer this event, which would not have been possible without the generosity of our many community sponsors. We invite the public. They are invited to attend this free lunchtime event, which will offer professional health screenings courtesy of Los Robles Hospital, neck massages, demonstrations, giveaways, and over 60 safety and wellness-related vendors. Exhibitors will offer educational information about resources on family and pet safety, child fingerprints, nutrition, fitness, heart health, and much more. The free health screenings will include the blood glucose, blood pressure, body mass index, and foot screenings. There's also free parking and free transportation from the Global Senior Center to the event. Participants can also enjoy a heart-healthy lunch options and have lunch under the oaks. And speaking about food, wanted to mention that anyone interested in helping others in need, that manna will be there at the event and will be accepting contributions of non-perishable items. Further details regarding this event are available on the front page of the city's website at www.toox.org. And as a committee chairperson, I wanted to say we really appreciate the opportunity this evening to share this information, and the Safety and Wellness Committee would like to thank the city council and Caneo Recreation and Park District Board of Directors for the support in promoting the safety and wellness event to the community. So, thank you. And we've also offered flyers on the event to each of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Jan Smith? Jan will be followed by Rondi Guthrie.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, council members, city staff. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of your chamber, the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. Wanted to bring you up to date on a couple of items that are coming up. A week from this Thursday is our 10th Annual Spirit of Community event. It's May 31. It is from 6:00 until 8:00. It'll then be back at Baxter Healthcare. This is where we honor law enforcement, fire personnel, armed forces, and this year, community volunteer is Jerry Miller, doctor. The nonprofit is Senior Concerns. The Caneo Valley Unified School Teacher of the Year is Darren Erickson from Westlake High School. And the Los Virgin Unified School District Teacher of the Year is Anne Bromhoff, and she is from White Oak Elementary. The tickets are still available. They are $35. You can go online at the chamber at www.caneochamber.org and reserve your spot. And I will say that we have a quota of around... It's a little over 200, and the seats are filling up fast. Wanted to also bring to your attention again that the Chamber trip to Ireland is still taking reservations. The Chamber is hosting a meet and greet to give you further details at the Chamber office on Thursday, and that will be June 7 from 5:30 to 6:30. This trip is for $2,500... No, $27,000. $2,755, and that includes round-trip airfare from LAX, hotel accommodations, daily breakfasts, and your guided tours. And it's nine days traveling, October 31 through November 8. And then I wanted to remind folks, especially Chamber members, or if you're not a Chamber member, become one, because we are still looking to have a few more ambassadors, and the ambassadors are our welcoming arm of the Chamber, who are at our mixers, our breakfasts, our social events. And I wanted to tell you very quickly, this is for information purposes only, that the Chamber Board did review the two initiatives on the June ballot, and they have taken a position. Prop 28, term limits, we are opposing, and Proposition 29, the cigarette tax, we are opposing. Last but not least, the Chamber would also like to send out condolences to Mr. Glancy's family and our kindest regards. That concludes my remarks. I hope everyone has a safe and joyful Memorial Day holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Rondi Guthrie, followed by Debbie Gregory.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, members of the council. My name is Rondi Guthrie with the Criscom Company, and I live in the city of Ventura. I would first like to send my deep condolences to the city and to the family of Tom Glancy. He was truly a statesman and dedicated public servant who will be greatly missed. I wanted to talk to you this evening about your solid waste contracts. As far as I know, the city has never actually had a competitive bidding process to select your trash haulers. Your current residential agreements expire on June 30, 2018, and your current commercial agreement expires on June 30, 2015. However, next month, you will be voting on extensions to those contracts that move the termination dates to 2018 and 2021. I would ask that you not automatically extend these contracts and instead give your residents and business owners an opportunity to get more competitive rates and more innovative recycling programs. Most cities in Ventura County have very high trash rates compared to other Southern California communities. For example, we often find residential trash rates in Thousand Oaks are 50% higher and commercial rates 25% higher. In addition to more competitive rates, the typical length of these contracts is no more than 10 years, with most terms consisting of a seven-year contract. Since the city has never gone out to bid on these contracts, it only seems appropriate that you forego the extensions and allow for an open RFP process to ensure Thousand Oaks is getting the best deal you can. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Debbie Gregory. And Ms. Gregory will be followed by Nick Kidway. Good evening, Ms. Gregory.
Good evening. Debbie Gregory, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I did not share the same politics as Mr. Glancy, but I admired his work ethic and his military service to our nation. I know firsthand the sense of loss and grief you are feeling. I, along with many others, experienced the same loss when Ed Masri passed away a few years ago. What I hope you can now understand is how painful it was when Mrs. Irwin and Mr. Fox decided to hold interviews to appoint Mr. Masri's replacement the very night of his memorial, when we were grieving. Edward was promised that the people would elect his replacement, but this promise was not kept. Instead, the very day we buried him, we had to come here to these chambers from the memorial to participate and comment on the process. If our roles were reversed, I think I speak for everyone, regardless of our political views, when I say we would have not done such a horrific thing to you while you're mourning the loss of your friend. I don't think you'll listen to me, or others, or allow the voters to elect a replacement, but we'll again appoint another crony, as you did when you recently appointed Mr. Price, instead of allowing the people to elect a new person for Mr. Gillette's term, which is... The election being only a few months away. I also see tonight on the agenda that you want to fight the term limits initiative, something else that the people voted for. While I'm here, I'd like to address the fact that each time I speak of healthcare benefits that Mrs. Irwin and the late Mr. Glancy awarded themselves and their families for life at taxpayer expense, Mrs. Irwin has Mr. Mitnick, the city manager, do damage control. My comments are clearly hitting a nerve. Mrs. Irwin should be ashamed of what she did. She had a blatant conflict of interest to decide her own benefits, but this did not stop her. The problem is that Mr. Mitnick only tells a few facts to confuse people. I was brought up, when you tell only a half-truth, it's the same as a lie. Yes, it's true that Mrs. Irwin has decided for this election year that she's running to enroll in minimal healthcare benefits. However, what Mr. Mitnick left out is that in any subsequent year, next year, Mrs. Irwin can elect the most comprehensive and expensive healthcare package for herself and her dependents, and she can do this for the rest of their lives, and we foot the bill. This is for part-time... This is for a part-time job. This is the kind of shenanigans that we expect to see in the city of Bell. The city attorney told us that we had to approve these benefits, or the city could be sued. I think the only people that could have sued us were Mrs. Irwin and the late Mr. Glancy. They should both have recused themselves, but this didn't happen. And yes, it's also true, Mr. Price did not receive this benefit, because Mrs. Irwin made sure that no council member after her would get it. This is the whole truth and not a distorted damage control version. Mrs. Irwin decided that your vote did not count and took your right to elect a replacement away and appointed her buddy, Mr. Price. On November 6th, you have the power and the right to vote, and you can vote Mrs. Irwin out. Don't vote for someone who takes away democracy, who votes and locks step with Mr. Fox and rewards herself.
Please, Ms. Gregory, please wrap it up. Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, whose most beneficial, most merciful. My name is indeed Nick Igbal Kidway, and last time I checked, that's the way I started for 10 years, I think, and mentioned Dr. Glancy's name, and his smiling face was either there or where Mr. Price is sitting now. We all come and go, but the business of the city and the world continues. He was quite a gentleman and an asset to the city and everybody that knew him. One of the votes that I would like to bring to your attention is the empty former Kmart lot on Hampshire. The disgrace and ugliness that exists and will continue to exist because we have nothing left. It was an orchestrated campaign by a minority businessperson, maybe not minority, but a smaller businessperson, do its center to stop Home Depot from opening. And it was orchestrated, and he very shrewdly used Linda Parks, councilmember Bill Delapena, and a lot of other citizens to get a ballot measure passed, as well as put enough pressure so that Mr. Fox and Mr. Irwin voted against the Home Depot project, which was one of the best projects that one could have imagined. And the results are, if you travel, I mean, which I do, in Santa Clarita, there are two Home Depots, very, they're both thriving, in each end of the town. And there's a Home Depot that was near the car dealerships, which closed about a year ago. And that's what really would, should have happened if the free enterprise was allowed to work, and Home Depot is not like Walmart, having predatory prices or something like that. If TOTV will show my overhead, that's from the council, from Mr. Ed Masry, one line to me to thank you. I don't think I have too much in writing from Dr. Glancy. That's my regret. I think I probably have a commendation when he was the mayor. I would like to remind the council that when Mr. Masry was being laid to rest, that's the day, unfortunately, the council chose to appoint Dr. Glancy. I just hope that such mistakes will not be repeated in the future. Right now, it is the campaign season, there are signs out everywhere. Have a black and white of Send Linda. She was the mayor in '98, when she and Mr. Fox and others passed the unconstitutional sign ordinance. You folks cannot have two signs on your own front yard. It's against the law in this city, if they are less than 150. And the council refuses to change it. Ready, Sag. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Sharon Moret, followed by Andy Levine.
Sharon Moret, Newbury Park. When someone has to vacate a seat on the council, it is necessary that there be an election. And whenever possible, it needs to be attached to a primary or another election. A vacant seat or a temporary appointment for a very brief period should be the only exception. It is not necessary for council members to be a homogeneous group or get along with each other. Council members are supposed to represent the public. They are supposed to be responsive to the public, not just to each other. Some decisions made by some members of the present council have been disastrous, and also other decisions failed to result in in an effort that would bring revenue to our city, such as at the lakes. We were supposed to be receiving money to our coffers, and that has not happened. Also, during the previous interview process resulting in an appointment for a three-year term, there was an incident which should have voided the process. It was when Mr. Fox let loose in what appeared to be a personal tirade, attacking one of the candidates. He was acting as a judge and jury in his despicable comments. The mayor should have stopped the proceedings and asked Mr. Fox to recuse himself. At that point, due to the small number of council members left, the process should have ceased, resulting in an election being held. In order for the citizens to be represented, elections need to be held. This should not be an insiders' club. Our right to vote needs to be protected.
Thank you, Ms. Moret. Andy Levine, followed by Linda Bronschweiger. Good evening.
Good evening. Andy Levine, Newbury Park, California. And I just want to say I'm very sad to hear about Glancy. I know he tried his best on the council. I mean, people don't really always agree, but I think he tried his best to do what he thought was a good job. I just want to say just a couple words. I just want to say I think it's time for the citizens to vote. Okay, maybe appointment for a couple months, but not for three years. I mean, this is in America, we used to be able to vote on, maybe for like 60 days at the most, but not three years. I think it's time for people to have the right to vote. And especially in Newbury Park, everybody on the council is from Thousand Oaks. I think it's time for some people in Newbury Park to have a say, too, because we feel left out, because sometimes the projects are impacting Newbury Park, and sometimes the people that are on the city council, they don't live in Newbury Park, so they can't tell about all the traffic jams are going to be happening. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Linda Bronschweiger, followed by Lucas Thayer.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin and council members and staff. My name is Linda Bronschweiger. I'm the CEO of the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund. I'm a resident of the city of Camarillo. And I'm here to, one, thank you all again for your financial commitment to the Housing Trust Fund early on. But more importantly, I wanted to share with you that we are very excited that we received the full $2 million match from the state of California from the Prop 1(c) funds for new housing trust funds. So we will be launching the Housing Trust Fund with a $4 million commitment. We do have some funds to raise to get to that $4 million, but we have a commitment of that. The Housing Trust Fund, as you may know, is, has a revolving loan fund that will be for the development and rehabilitation of affordable housing units throughout the county of Ventura, with a primary focus on units for homeless, veterans, farmworkers, and emancipated youth, as well as low-income. We will be focusing initially on multifamily, down the road, possibly single-family, first-time homeowners, but at this point, it will be for multifamily. We are launching with celebration on June 6th. We invite the public to come, as well as yourselves. Hopefully, you received your email invitations. That will be at the Tower Club in Oxnard. And we are celebrating this long-time effort to bring this county together with multi-jurisdictions, as well as the county of Ventura, to support the development of more affordable housing. Our trust fund, although it took many years to get here, is unique in the state of California because we are the only housing trust fund that is made up of multiple jurisdictions, as well as the county. So we are proud of that, and we're excited, and now looking forward to moving forward and raising many more millions of dollars to support the residents of our communities in their need for more affordable housing. So I thank you again for your early support into the Housing Trust Fund, because that made the difference in our ability to get that $2 million. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bronschweiger. Lucas Thayer.
Hope you enjoyed your cake.
Oh, it was very good. Yes, we did enjoy it.
Good, I'm glad. And I'd like you to put it in the minutes of that last meeting that you got the cake. And I'd like you to pass a resolution stating that money is not the same thing as speech. I appreciate that you passed the resolution stating that corporations are not people. Now we got to move on and continue with this important constitutional amendment. Pass a resolution stating that money is not the same thing as speech, and urge Congress to pass a constitutional amendment saying that money is not the same thing as speech. We need fair elections. We need fair elections for a person to sit in that seat. You don't have the power to appoint a person to sit in that seat, because you are not the people of Thousand Oaks. These are the people of Thousand Oaks, and they are the people that get to appoint a person to sit in that seat. And I want the city council of the city of Thousand Oaks to pass a resolution demanding justice for Kelly Thomas. Kelly Thomas was murdered by six Fullerton police officers in July of 2011. He was beaten to death brutally. I urge you all to watch the video. It was a surveillance camera video, about 20 minutes long, of those six very large officers kneeling on his chest, crushing his rib cage, making it impossible for him to breathe. By the way, he was disabled and had no house, and he was being treated unfairly. He was being harassed by these officers repeatedly throughout the final years of his life, and that is not okay. That is discrimination. It is bigotry. It is a hate crime. Those six officers need to go to jail forever. I do not believe in the death penalty, so I don't think that they should get the death penalty. I want this city to make its officers go through a rigorous screening process, make sure that they're not on steroids or other mind-altering substances, make sure that they don't have anger issues, or emotional issues, or hate issues that might cause them to kill a person accidentally. That was not okay. I also want to talk about entitlement programs like the National Defense Authorization Act. The NDAA is an entitlement program for the military-industrial complex. It makes it so that 59% of our tax dollars go towards the military and associated organizations, and that's not okay. That's not where I want my money to go. I do not want to have a war in Iran. Oh, by the way, the United States House of Representatives has passed a war in Iran. They're okay with going forward with it. But the city of Thousand Oaks can pass a resolution stating that we don't want a war in Iran, and then, you know, 30 years from now, we can look back on history and say, hey, Thousand Oaks said no war in Iran. And I want the city of Thousand Oaks to make sleep be considered a human right. Sleep is a human right. Public space is a human right. Public space must be made available to all people at all times for all nonviolent activities, including sleep. A person that's sleeping on the sidewalk is not hurting anybody, they are just trying to sleep. Everybody sleeps. Some people can't afford to buy a place to sleep. Some people can't afford to rent a place to sleep, and they just need to go to sleep in a park. That is okay. It needs to be given as a right. So I'd like to end on a moment of silence for justice for Kelly Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Thayer. And our last speaker for public comments is Glenn Kimball.
Guys, I'd like to express some of my condolences for Mr. Glancy. But I think a very important thing to note is that even though he's only got a couple more months left in his term, that you should not be appointing. A couple people already spoke on this, and they made compromises. They said, okay, if he's only got a couple months, you can appoint someone. You shouldn't be appointing anyone ever. A point should not be a term in a democratic dictionary at all. Speaking of democracy, I've got a copy of the U.S. Constitution. I just got this from Elton Gallagher's office. Surprisingly enough, or unsurprisingly enough, he's violated several parts of this. Let me read you some excerpts. The Amendment Number 1. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." Also, in the 14th Amendment, Section 1. "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States wherein they reside." Citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." Last year, in December, the House and the Senate both voted to pass something called the National Defense Authorization Act of fiscal year 2012, and included several provisions that allowed for the military and the police to indefinitely detain anyone, including United States citizens, without a charge, without any sort of due process, no trial or anything. And, I mean, if you were paying attention, that violates a bunch of laws in here. And I think that Thousand Oaks should pass a resolution saying that those provisions of the NDAA fiscal year 2012 cannot be enforced within city limits. For those of you who don't know about the NDAA, it's an annual thing, and this year, just this last week, the House has been voting on it and amendments to it, and they specifically voted down amendment to end the Afghanistan War. They specifically voted against an amendment to get rid of this indefinite detention provision, and they specifically voted against an amendment that would clarify that they were not declaring war in Iran. So now you know that as soon as the Senate ratifies it, we will be at war with a fourth country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. We are on the consent calendar now. Do we have any items that we want pulled from the consent calendar? Just Bill Delapena.
Just, yes, thank you. Items G, H, and J.
Any others?
That's it, thank you.
Would you like to move the rest of the consent calendar?
Certainly, we can move the rest of the consent calendar.
Vote, please.
Mayor, we have a speaker card.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for correcting that. Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park. Council will not change the procedure so that speakers or residents are recognized when they should be. Sorry that the young people have left, but I would like the overhead projector to show the minutes in highlight. Those are the public speakers from two weeks ago. It is very shameful and un-American. We had a Navy veteran die. Is this what people are fighting for in Afghanistan, that we cannot even have minutes that accurately reflect what is happening here? I mean, it's, I don't really, for the life of me, understand why this council refuses to take the two minutes that it takes to do it right. And I learned the ropes in this council. I haven't, I'm from Fullerton, I never knew about the Fullerton City Council, but all the minutes of the city are on the website. I would like to speak about NNO, the ordinance regarding the two illegally purchased parcels that are on the left-hand side. What you're seeing is from the Department of Finance. These are the six items that they rejected, that the city did not even follow the ABC's fundamentals of doing due diligence in asking to keep the money. Basically, these two parcels were taken so that, as well as the money was given to the auto mall for parking, $6.2 million, as well as doing the development agreement next door with Mr. Crusoe. All were done after AB 26 deadline of August 2010. And right now, the State Department of Finance is diligently looking at these, to deny them, because this is a blatant attempt to steal from a wonderful state and waste the money here in Thousand Oaks. Yes, I used the term correctly, because to manage this facade of the redevelopment agency, this city was charging $1 million for help. I mean, is this the day of ledgers and bicycles, that it takes so much time to administer these? Plus, the same people are being charged $200,000 Plus, the same people are being charged $200,000, the same employees, from the federal government for administering the CDBG federal grants. Please, TOTV, just quickly show this. This is the email address redevelopment underscore at CA for complaints. Every vote, every email counts.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Ms. Bill Vellapena, do you want to move the consent?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick correction to the motion I made. We approved the rest of the consent calendar, but I do need to include, we need to include the revisions for items I, M, and P in our supplemental package, or packet, for the record. All right. Item...
Do we have a...
Do we need to vote on it? Should we vote on it again? Okay, then I'll rescind the previous one, and then we can just re-vote on approving the rest.
Okay, so, we want to pull G, H, J, I, M, and P?
Mm-hmm. No. We are pulling I, M, and P. I'm sorry, we're not pulling I, M, and P. We're pulling G, H, and J, and we need to include revisions for items I, M, and P as in our supplemental package.
Oh, that's, okay, all right. Very good. Okay. Vote on that, please.
The motion carries four zero, and I have some ordinance titles to read. Item N is an ordinance adopting Amendment Number Five to Civic Arts Plaza's specific plan to add adjacent property described as accessories parcels 670-0-182-060-190-210-220 and -230 west side property and adopt appropriate land use regulations for said property, SPA And the ordinance title for O is an ordinance adopting Amendment Number Two to specific Plan Number Twenty, Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plan to permit drive-through facilities for eating and drinking establishments along Boulevard frontage subject to certain development standards, SPA 2012-70074.
Mayor Protem, Bill Vellapena, item G.
Thank you. Item G deals with the city's slurry seal program. And I just wanted to find out from our Public Works Director if you could perhaps let us know whether any of the projects would include any of the streets that are still waiting to be slurried due to the Fios Verizon construction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Protem. The, this project is our regular slurry seal program. That's budgeted year-to-year. There's seven or eight hundred thousand dollars that we do put aside in gas tax revenues to slurry seal, and it's part of our ongoing pavement maintenance program. The streets that you're referring to, that had construction work done to install the Verizon FTP, the fiber-to-the-premises, high-speed internet-type infrastructure, those streets are not included here. Those will be part of a separate project. In fact, staff is working, as we speak, on having discussions about which streets qualify for slurry seal and how much budget we have from Verizon, because they did cash out on a number of streets in lieu of resurfacing. So, that'll come back to you at a later date.
Great, thank you. And regarding item, while you're still there, item H, the overlay project, same question. Would that affect any of this?
I don't believe that any of these streets were part of Verizon as well, although I'm not certain. Some of these streets may have had Verizon work on them. That's something I'll have to check and get back to you on. I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head.
No, that's quite all right. And item seven J, which is the Grand Brimhall Library Archives Building shelving upgrade, Mr. Brogdon, there you go. It says we're waiving the bidding process, and I was just wondering whether you could explain publicly why we're waiving that, or why you're recommending that it be waived.
Yes, absolutely. These are shelves that are in our separate archive building. They're compact shelving that has been powered by electricity up until now, and we're switching to a mechanical form rather than electricity. And because some of the shelving remains in there, it's critical for the success of the project that we continue to use the same vendor to provide compatible components.
Very good, thank you. And with that, I move items G, H, and J for approval.
Vote, please. Motion carries four zero. There are no public hearings, and we have department reports. Nine D is being taken out of order. If John Prescott could please present the report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you do have our report before you. By way of background, as an adjunct to the Western Plateau Preservation Plan, which the City Council approved in 2002, there was a requirement of the Operating Engineers' Pension Trust, which was one of the property owners in the Dos Fianos area that was affected by that plan, to provide affordable housing. And the city entered an agreement with the Operating Engineers whereby the city would provide a site, and the Operating Engineers' Pension Trust would build at least 50 affordable housing units. The site selected from among city-owned properties at the time was large enough to accommodate a larger project, and therefore, the agreement that was eventually entered provided for 140 housing units, apartment units. For a variety of reasons, mainly the economic feasibility, the Operating Engineers did not pursue the project in a manner that would allow it to be constructed. There were still some issues relating to whether or not it would meet the rate of return that was specified in that original agreement with the city. And now, the engineers have approached the city with a proposed assignment of that agreement to the Thousand Oaks Rancho Cano LLC, one of the principles of which is Meta Housing Development. The way the agreement was written, it does give the engineers the right to sign the agreement. The city has a very short period of time to basically vet the proposed assignee and to approve the agreement, or reject it for relatively narrow grounds that relate to the experience and financial viability of the proposed assignee. And we have reviewed the material Meta has submitted. We have met with them. We've looked at some of the projects they've done, and we feel that they are financially qualified and able to do the project. And so, at this point in time, we are recommending City Council approve the assignment of the Affordable Housing Agreement to Meta as specified in our report. And that would just mean that would take over for Operating Engineers vis-à-vis the development of the Affordable Housing Project on the city property.
Do we have questions?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Prescott. You'd mentioned the rate of return, and that is of great concern, well, not only to me, but also to Many Mansions. They have a letter in tonight's supplemental packet, and they have, it seems to be, several serious concerns regarding this contract. Has staff evaluated Many Mansions' concerns, and how could we allow a contract that is nine years old to include an 8% rate of return in these difficult economic times?
Well, the issue before City Council tonight is whether an existing contract that the city entered and is binding on both parties can be assigned to a third party. And the agreement allows the Operating Engineers to sign the agreement in the manner that's being done tonight. So, they would be subject to the same agreement. The city cannot unilaterally change the contract, and that is not before the council this evening. As we indicated in our report, T.O. Rancho LLC has some potential changes to the contract in mind, and if they do receive the assignment tonight, then they may be in a position to ask the city for some changes, and the city would then be able to ask for its own changes. And it would all have to come back to City Council for approval.
Okay, perhaps the city attorney could explain as to the legal procedures regarding this contract.
Thank you. I did, in fact, also receive a copy of the correspondence from Many Mansions, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Schroeder regarding it, and advised him that the only issue before the council tonight is an actual assignment of the agreement as it stands. At this point, no one is requesting revisions to the agreement. I think that T.O. Rancho Cano has indicated that they are looking at possibly making some changes in the future, but at this point, they are willing to agree to the agreement as it stands. And so, when we're looking at the actual agreement, there's one provision that applies here, and that's just the assignment provision. And that's really all this before the City Council tonight. And that language in the agreement requires that a city, the city cannot unreasonably withhold consent to the assignment and must grant consent if the assignee, T.O. Rancho Cano, is financially qualified, agrees in writing to fulfill the obligations under the agreement, and has the experience in providing affordable housing. We have met with T.O. Rancho Cano, and we're provided documentation of the various affordable housing projects they've done throughout the area, and their track record of getting funding for affordable housing. So, we found that they met the criteria set forth in the agreement. And since the only issue before the City Council tonight is whether to consent to an assignment and not to consider possible changes in the future, staff is recommending that the council consent to the assignment, given the limited discretion here.
Well, thank you very much for explaining that to us. The rate of return is, of course, not the only concern. There's also a request that the moderate-income category be replaced with extremely low income, and that reserve 30 of the units for homeless individuals and families. Now, could it have been entirely possible for us to renegotiate this before it came before us to reassign to a third party?
If T.O. Rancho Cano and Operating Engineers wanted to work on amendment, they could have. In fact, we've talked to them about whether they wanted to also negotiate this agreement, and their preference is to just do the assignment so that they know that they are actually in the driver's seat. Right now, Operating Engineers has all of the rights under it. So, T.O. Rancho Cano really doesn't have the authority to negotiate any changes to the agreement, because they don't have any legal rights under the agreement. So, they chose to pursue just the assignment at this point, and acknowledged in writing that they would agree with this agreement. But they have indicated that they'll want to talk to us about changes in the future.
Okay, so, if we were to accede this tonight, and it's reassigned to T.O. Rancho, what leverage would we have in order to try to renegotiate this agreement?
If T.O. Rancho Cano approaches us and says that they need some changes to the agreement because they can't provide the development as set forth in the agreement, then that would be basically the incentive for both sides to sit down and talk about the agreement as a whole.
It would have to be triggered by them, not by us. We couldn't ask them, approach them, and say, these are legitimate concerns, 8% rate of return, unreasonable, moderate income, probably not reasonable either.
We could always approach them and ask them, but if they are willing to develop the project as, you know, identical as to what's set forth in the agreement, then they would have that right to do it, because that was already in the agreement that we entered into some time ago. But we could always ask them to do that.
Doesn't mean that they will do it. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Mr. Price?
Well, I think it's really kind of a comment. I think we're getting into some same territory that we were in during our last meeting, where we were discussing things that are not before us, but I do share some of the concerns there, and I don't see where they would necessarily have the impetus to want to come back to the table, and therefore, the property might go undeveloped for another lengthy period of time. But I understand that's not before us, so...
Any other questions? So, we have one speaker card, Mr. Cohen, and he's here for questions only. Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Good evening.
Again?
Again, yeah.
Okay. Tom Cohen, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm here on behalf of T.O. Rancho LLC.
Great, then you were just the right person to ask. You heard what my concerns were. Is there a chance that T.O. Rancho will want to renegotiate some of the terms of the agreement?
We received a copy of the letter that was delivered this afternoon, and they raised some issues that we accept, and I would bet that we'll be talking to staff about a number of these issues. But our first hurdle before we can take that leap is to ensure that we have the city's consent to step into the shoes of the Operating Engineers before we do that. But there will be discussions. You can bet on that.
Great, that is on record. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just no questions. To the issue with the agreement, just by way of history, this was part of the Western Plateau Agreement, which was debated a lot at the time with the current council. The agreement with Operating Engineers was basically fashioned exclusively by Mr. Masary and the Operating Engineers. And at the time, I indicated that I had questions about a number of things with respect to an affordable project in that part of the city. So, just by way of history, that's why some of the things came in front of the council. It was part of the agreement for the Western Plateau. The original Western Plateau plan did not include this portion, just to remind folks. It was added on. So, I'm sure there'll be time for us to discuss the wisdom of that move several years ago. But I think, as the city attorney's pointed out, the item in front of us today is just simply a transfer of the agreement.
Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Vote, please. Motion carries four zero. Item nine A, filling council member vacancy. Can Ms. Lawrence please present the report?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Due to former council member Glancy's resignation from the City Council effective May 11, 2012, City Council needs to review the options to fill the vacancy. Since the city currently has no municipal code regulations governing the filling of council member vacancies, state law provides the following options. Option one is to fill the vacancy by appointment within 60 days of the vacancy, which is no later than July 10, 2012, for the remainder of the term, which ends this November, 2012. If this option is selected, staff would request direction on the process which City Council would like to take in order to appoint a new council member. Option two is to call a special election within 60 days of the vacancy and leave the position vacant until the election. The election would take place in conjunction with the regular election in November, 2012. Since this seat is already one of the two seats scheduled for the November election, there is no additional cost associated with calling a special election. $60,000 is already budgeted for the two seats and the term limits measure, which will be covered in the next agenda item. Although technically, a special election would be called pursuant to the government code, in this particular case, the special election would be seamless with the regular November election to fill this vacancy. The government code does also allow the City Council to adopt an ordinance allowing the council to make an interim appointment to fill the vacancy and call a special election for November 6. And in this particular case, the option to the appoint will accomplish the same thing. Additionally, adopting a new ordinance with the current city council meeting would be problematic, because it could not be introduced, adopted, and effective prior to July 10, the deadline to fill the vacancy. This concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Do we have questions for Ms. Lawrence? Mayor Protem, Bill Vellapena?
Thank you. If you could just go over that last portion once more about the ordinance that the council could adopt. Thank you.
Okay. The government code also allows the City Council to adopt an ordinance to make an interim appointment to fill the vacancy in conjunction with calling a special election for November 6. So, the person... for November 6. So the person, if the council adopted this ordinance, and it was feasible to introduce the ordinance and adopt the ordinance, and for it to be effective 31 days later, the interim appointment would be until November 6, 2012, and a special election would be called, which is already taking place in November with the regular election. So it would be filled November 6, either by appointment or by adopting this ordinance.
And that's the reason why it's not actually part of the recommendations in our staff report tonight?
It's not in your written report, but it is being presented to you verbally tonight, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. If I could just clarify, a special election would be called, even though it's one and the same, if the seat were to remain vacant, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions for Ms. Lawrence? All right. Our first speaker on the item is Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director concerned citizens of Thousand Oaks. I guess the voters are tired, because this thing is being repeated so quickly. I hope the council will do the right thing and not appoint anybody, because appointing somebody on a temporary basis will give them an unfair advantage in November. Also, the appointment of Mr. Douglas Tapkin for planning commissioner is illegal, because the appointing council member was no longer here. And when it happened in the past, you have always opened the position. And it's very sad that there's no rule of law in this chamber, and people do as they please, depending upon political expediency. This is a letter that the mayor wrote to Barbara Boxer on April 24 in response to the citizens, and I quote, "The Thousand Oaks City Council recognizes the importance of fair and democratic elections and has adopted its own regulations pertaining to local elections and campaigns." What kind of a city are we, I mean, where we don't even have an ordinance for filling vacancies? If T.O.T.V. will show the overhead that is from Mayor Del Campo's time, this is by Linda Parks, she made a proposal about Lang Ranch. Even now, every council member can put two items on the agenda, like Linda Parks did there. And we don't have to be accosted when I go to the Albertsons regarding making the change. And even now, there is time for you to do that, rather than having to have this come through the vote. And I saw it. I mean, people were, it was so easy for the man to get signatures. I just couldn't believe it. By the way, am I in USA or in Pakistan? Still in Pakistan or what? I mean, we're discussing a right to vote. I mean, why is this even on the agenda? I just cannot really believe it. T.O.T.V. can quickly show that there was a planning commissioner that was fired earlier, a wonderful lady, wonderful job. Her sin was that she voted against the auto mall sign. So these are the kind of issues, unfortunately, that we are involved in in this city. And I would implore the DA, I mean, I don't know, why do they have to go to Oxnard all the time? When are they going to come over here, I mean, pick up the boxes? There's something evil going on here, even before this thing was built. And otherwise, why would they not, we will have an appointed councilman, appoint somebody else? I hope not.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Our next speaker is Dick Huse, followed by Kathleen Doran.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the staff. My name is Dick Huse, and I'm a longtime resident of the city of Thousand Oaks. Dr. Glancy's recent passing was certainly unexpected and very disappointing news. He will certainly be missed by his family and his many, many friends, excuse me, in the community. The council is faced once again with the challenge of filling a vacant seat on the council. I believe that the council should not only view this as a challenge, but also as an opportunity, an opportunity to demonstrate to the voters of our beautiful city that the council recognizes and respects the right to elect citizens to serve on the council. The staff has given you, or has provided a report that outlines the two options available for filling the seat. I strongly recommend that the council call a special election to be held on November 6, and leave the position vacant until then. Some will say that the position should be filled immediately, but I submit that there have been vacancies over several months in the past without significant problems. We all know that anyone appointed to the council immediately becomes an incumbent. And we are also aware that incumbents win 85 to 90% of the time. I implore the council to give the citizens, the voters of Thousand Oaks, the first opportunity in many years to elect someone to the council who is not, I repeat, not running against an incumbent. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Doran, followed by Debbie Bernbaum.
Good evening. I am a resident of the city of Thousand Oaks. My name is Kathleen Doran. I am here tonight not to berate anybody or to denigrate the memory of any council members who've been a part of helping our city. However, as a resident of the city, as a voter, as a homeowner and a business owner, I find that I need to remind ourselves, we all need to remind ourselves and others, that as city council members, you work for me. You work for us. Civil service is exactly that. You may be elected. However, the election process is no different than management in a company getting together and working through the different candidates to choose a person for a position. I find that as one of your bosses, I find as employees, you can suggest a potential candidate, a friend, a cousin, a nephew who's out of a job, someone whose resume you've seen on Monster, or someone who comes to you and says, "I've been doing a good job here, and I deserve to have a position," be it on the planning commission, wherever it is. But each of those resumes should be presented to management, upper management, to the boss, to make the choice on who it is that gets hired. I'm not particularly fond of it. If an employee comes to me and says, "You have to hire this person," that's not how it works. If I am the boss, I get to make the choice. We are the bosses. We get to make the choice. We have unfortunately allowed appointments in the past, and it is no, please accept, it's nothing against you. I'm sure you've come here with all of the best intentions, as has anybody who comes to this position. You guys put up with a lot. However, it is still our choice. There is no harm at all in leaving the position open. There is no cost at all in leaving the position open. I would hope that all of you can get along well enough to be able to leave the position open and deal with this professionally. But at this point in time, leave it open. We will decide. We are the boss.
Thank you, Ms. Doran. Debbie Bernbaum, followed by Debbie Gillespie.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Bernbaum. I'm a resident of Newbury Park. I'm going to reiterate probably what you've heard many times tonight. The council finds itself with a second vacancy in as many months, and this gives you a unique opportunity to reevaluate if and how you fill this seat. Most of you, but not all of you, were elected to serve as representatives of the residents of the city. None of you, however, have an ethical mandate to repeatedly circumvent the voters of this community by hand choosing who sits in those chairs regardless of your rationale. Excuse me. I stand here now to urge you to carefully and thoughtfully consider your options in light of the fact that elections are just around the corner. I strongly believe that voters should decide who represents them through their votes. Should you decide to appoint for a second time, I would hope that your appointment serves solely for the remainder of council member Glancy's term, with no further aspirations to then run as an incumbent in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernbaum. Debbie Gillespie, followed by Mick Ferris.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, and city council members. I'm here today to remind you of the city council's goal compliance. And as I read through it, it was ethical behavior, stability, public trust, transparency, confidence, and cooperative interaction. What I've witnessed since I got involved, which is just a very few months ago, is that there was no transparency. Your decisions a few months ago to fill a vacancy was not transparent to the community. As a result, I got involved, and I'm a busy person that's trying to earn a living, but it was important to me. So I went around to my neighbors, and I explained to them what was happening, and they were shocked. Nobody understood that the city council could just appoint someone and circumvent elections. People really don't understand. That's maybe shame on the public, but that's the way it is. And that's how often things get passed, and things happen, and the city of Bell is a result, the city of Oxnard is a result of things that happen behind the scenes. I ask you to take this position that's open now, make it available for an election, and leave it vacant until that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gillespie. Mick Ferris, followed by Ron Tankski.
Thank you. Good evening, Mick Ferris. I live in the Newbury Park area of Thousand Oaks. Before I have any comments, I did, with three of you, three of the four members on the council, I had the opportunity and pleasure to work with you on the planning commission. And I did also have the pleasure of working with Councilmember Glancy for a strong period of time before he elevated to the council. And I got the opportunity to express my thanks to him for his service for the community at the planning commission, but at that point in time, he had not yet passed. And so it was sadness that we recognize his service, and I'm very thankful that I've had the opportunity to work with him, even though we found ourselves on opposite sides of a vote at times. I certainly knew that he had his views and thoughts at the best interest of the community. But unfortunately, we still carry on with the business that we have today, and the seat next to Councilmember Fox is in fact vacant. And what we have in front of you is effectively two choices. There will be an election in November. Voters will have an opportunity to vote for who serves for the next four years. But your choice tonight is whether to allow the voters unimpeded to choose the best member that they see fit of the community to serve in that seat, or to fill it for the remainder of the term. I would urge you to leave it vacant, allow the voters the opportunity to pick who they feel is best to fit in that seat. It is their seat. You are their representatives. And as a result of the previous two appointments, in which the council chose to take it upon themselves to see fit who should fill that seat, we've obviously, we've formed an initiative, and as a result of that, we've had to collect 7,279 signatures to qualify. You will be seeing in the next week that we will be turning in over 10,000 signatures for that initiative. There's a strong sense in the community that the previous decisions were not in the voters' best interest, and they have taken action to make sure that in the future, it doesn't happen again. I would implore you for this particular decision. Make the right choice for the voters, and allow it to stay vacant. Allow the public to be able to determine who fills that seat for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Ron Tankski, followed by Susan Tankski.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First, my condolences to the Glancy family on its passing. I could echo what's been said before tonight, that the words, lack of transparency, circumventing, I hate to hear that about the council and their actions in the past, and I look forward to having the opportunity, as most people in the city will have, to vote in a special election, to elect a new member of the council. And I've been disappointed in the past. People have been appointed, lack of participation by the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Susan Tankski.
Members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I agree with all of the other speakers, who expressed their ideas very eloquently. And basically, what they're saying is, and I'm not speaking as articulately as they did, but what's happening is the city council, probably not meaning to, is trouncing on the right of citizens to retain their voting rights. I read a letter to the editor in, I believe it was the Ventura paper, or perhaps the Acorn, about Councilman Price, who was appointed for three years, and what a nice gentleman he was, and a good person, et cetera, et cetera, and a capable person. And I'm sure he is. But the problem is, the voters of Thousand Oaks, the residents of Thousand Oaks, we never had the opportunity to, you know, hear you in a debate or speak. And three years is a long, long time to appoint someone to serve as a representative. So what we're asking is this time, to do the right thing. Don't trounce anymore on our voting rights, because this is a democracy that we live in. And allow us to vote in November, when you will have an election, and you won't even have to put out any more funds. And I thank you very much. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have two speaker cards that both say council members should be voted on by the people.
So please don't make an appointment. Just let's have a vote.
All right, Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to move for item two, which is called for the special election, which essentially is the same election we're having in November of 2012, for the filling of the vacant position by Councilmember Glancy. Just a couple of brief comments. All things being equal, all of us should be voted and elected to office. We have elections in Thousand Oaks every two years, where the voters have an opportunity to elect their representatives. We had a very unique circumstance over the last two months, where we lost two of the five members of the city council. And And based on the information we’re getting from staff and what state law provided, we had a couple of options. My first preference would have been to appoint for the remainder of this year and then have an election. But we were advised by the staff that because of the time limitations, we would be running the risk of not being able to meet that obligation. What wasn’t discussed, but what was apparent now, was Councilmember Clancy was fighting terminal cancer. And so all the people that came up here and talked about the egregious decisions the council made, they either weren’t privy to that information, which I understand, or certainly weren’t looking at the responsibility the council had to ensure that we had at least three, preferably four, people each and every council meeting in order to conduct city business. I’ve been here for a while. It’s not uncommon, for various reasons, councilmembers to miss meetings. With only three members on the council, we ran the real risk of not being able to conduct city business. While that may not satisfy some, who clearly have a political agenda, I think for the voting public to understand now, in retrospect, that we’ve lost Councilmember Clancy, that given the circumstances, given the facts that were in front of the City Council at the time, it’s my view that we would have been borderline reckless in rolling the dice to try to fill two seats in the upcoming election, given the information we got from staff and the entirely resignation of Councilmember Gillette. So I’m making the motion certainly to fill the vacancy tonight. It puts the city at no risk. We’ll have the election for two seats, which is as it should be.
You’re saying to leave the seat open?
Yeah, the motion is recommendation two, which was outlined by the city clerk, which is to leave the seat open. We’re calling for a special election, but inasmuch as it ties to the November election, we’re going to have the normal election with one vacancy.
All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I most certainly agree with the motion, as it has always been my opinion that councilmembers should not be appointed, but elected. And this is not to attack any individual person who has been appointed. It is the process that I have been criticizing. We had an opportunity to also put Mr. Gillette’s seat on the November ballot. Council chose not to do that. We had three seats open, basically, or three council seats open in 2010, when all three incumbents ran for reelection. It’s not unusual to have another three seats this November, two years later. There would have not been any threat or any danger to do anything. In fact, I very much regret that the residents did not have the opportunity, or were not given the opportunity, to vote for a replacement for Mr. Gillette in November. I hope that, of course, congratulations, Mr. Dr. Ferris. I hope that everything will go well with the petition, because council still has not adopted any ordinance that would mirror what you are trying to accomplish. And having that said, I will most certainly agree with the decision to keep the seat vacant until November and let you decide. And I appreciate that that, it sounds like that will pass tonight, hopefully. Thank you.
Also, I’m going to support the motion. What we had was a unique situation when Dennis Gillette resigned. We had two very ill councilmembers. And for me, the decision, as I said then, and I say now, was stability for the city. I didn’t think it was appropriate to run with three councilmembers until November. I make decisions based on what I think is best for the city. In this case, we have four councilmembers. I don’t see any reason to put somebody temporarily in there, and we will see how it all plays out in November. Vote, please.
The motion carries for, sir.
Item 9B. If we can have the report, please, by the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I’d like to introduce Antoinette Mann, our deputy city clerk, who will be giving the report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. A general municipal election will be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2012, for the purpose of electing two councilmembers for four-year terms and submittal of a citizen-initiated measure related to term limits. With your action on Agenda 9A, the City Council vacancy, this election will be officially referred to as a general slash special municipal election. And the resolutions that pertain to that description for your consideration tonight are 1A, 2, and B2. A1 and B1 on the staff report will not be considered. The ballot will include the Thousand Oaks City Council Member Term Limit Initiative. This citizen-initiated measure imposes term limits on city councilmembers by amending the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, limiting councilmembers to serving no more than three consecutive four-year terms in office. If approved, this measure will be effective for councilmembers elected in 2014. Staff is requesting council take the following action tonight. First, adopt three mandatory resolutions. The first one is calling the general special election for one councilmember term, one vacant councilmember term, and the term limit measure. This resolution states what will be on the ballot, ensures the ballots and polling place are in conformance with state law, authorizes the city clerk to prepare election material and notices, and authorizes expenses to be paid to the county of Ventura. B2 is consolidation of our general special election with the statewide general election. This authorizes the county of Ventura to canvass our returns and authorizes our contract and payment to the county for election services. 1C is adopting candidate statement guidelines and costs. This will allow the candidates with the option to prepare a candidate statement in compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. The estimated cost is $1,000, and this resolution includes a payment refund mechanism when the actual costs by the county are received. Additionally, it specifies the candidate nomination period will be July 16, 2012, through August 10, 2012, and extended to August 15, if an incumbent does not run for office. We have additional recommended resolutions, excuse me, of 1D, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the citizen-initiated measure. This impartial analysis will present the effects of the measure on existing law and operations of the measure. The analysis may not exceed 500 words and will be printed preceding the arguments for and against the measure. We have two optional resolutions that we are asking for consideration, and they both pertain to the ballot measure. 2A would be authorizing the city council or councilmembers to file a written argument against the term limit measure. Pursuant to California Elections Code Section 9282, for citizens-initiated measures, the person filing the initiative may file a written argument in favor of the measure, and the legislative body, the city council, may submit an argument against the measure. Arguments may not exceed 300 words. If the city council chooses not to file an argument against the measure, the Election Code Section 9287 provides the city clerk with guidelines on how to select the argument against if one is submitted. The second optional, 2B, is providing for funding, excuse me, providing for a filing of rebuttal arguments on the term limits measure. The rebuttal process only applies if the city council adopts this resolution. If adopted, the city, excuse me, California Elections Code Section 9285 provides the city clerk with guidelines on receiving, processing word limits, and printing rebuttal arguments. Number three is to authorize expenditure of $60,000, which includes our contract costs with the Ventura County Election Division, and costs for our candidate materials, manuals, and forms. And number four, authorizing the expenditure of $3,000 and approving the League of Women Voters’ request to use the city council chambers and TOTV for a televised city council candidate forum on a date to be determined. Before I conclude, I would like to let those in the audience and those viewing know that they can drop off their vote-by-mail ballots for the upcoming June 5 primary election at the city council department anytime during regular business hours. They have up until 5:00 PM on election day to drop them off. This concludes our report, and we’re available for questions.
Mayor Protem, Bill de la Pena.
Thank you. Did you mean to say city clerk department, not city council, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I had a question on item 2A and B. From my perspective, I don’t necessarily think it’s appropriate for council to make an argument, but we’ll discuss that. What are some of, what is the criteria for if citizens come forward to write an argument on who would be able to present that?
The Election Code actually gives us guidelines on when an argument is submitted against, on who we, who the city clerk would select if the city council does not write an argument against. And it goes through, sorry, for citizen organizations. We would have, an individual voter can write an argument against. We would have bona fide association of citizens, and a combination of voters and associations could write a written argument against.
And the Election Code provides for a priority basis on those different categories. For instance, a bona fide association of citizens or combination would take precedence over one individual person filing an argument against. So if we get more than one argument, we prioritize in that fashion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Price?
One very quick question. In adopting either of these optional resolutions here, whether to allow the city council or councilmembers to file written arguments against it, I assume there’s a hierarchy there as well. The council, if they were to write a statement against it, that would take precedent over any individual councilmember?
The council would decide whether they want to file an argument against, and it’s up to the council to decide if it’s all five councilmembers or individual councilmembers. And as mentioned, the proponent has the right to do the argument in favor, and for a citizen-initiated petition, the council has the right to file an argument against.
Thank you.
Ms. Bill de la Pena?
Thank you. I recall with Measure B, I think there was an option to also remain neutral, and then that some of these rebuttals or arguments could be written by, as you mentioned, bona fide persons of the community. I don’t see that option on here.
Basically, if the council chooses not to adopt a resolution to do an argument against, that would be a neutral position. The choice was given for the Measure B, and at that time, council did not adopt anything.
Other questions? All right, we have three speaker cards. Our first speaker is Debbie Gregory.
I have concerns on whether or not you are going to file a written argument against term limits. You had the opportunity, if I’m not mistaken, to adopt the measure. There was signed by over 14,000 residents that they wanted term limits, and you chose not to do that at the time. I don’t know what you’re going to do after taking our right to vote for Mr. Gillette’s replacement and the feeble argument. I heard about how you had to do it. It’s about as good as the dog ate my homework. I don’t have a lot of confidence that you’re not going to write a rebuttal. The word impartial is rather humorous, that it would be an impartial one. I mean, the term limits, everyone on this council and everyone in the city serves at your pleasure, the city manager, the city attorney. You would benefit if there weren’t term limits, all of you individually. So it would not be an impartial argument whatsoever. I think that you had the opportunity to adopt it. You didn’t. I hope that you will be neutral on this and not do anything, but I don’t expect it, based on prior actions of this council. But I would be delighted if you did so. And I think the citizens, the 14,000-plus people that signed it, you know, I’m the CEO of Military Connection. I get to deal with heroes all the time. They go to third-world countries, and they fight so that they can have elections to elect people, and they can have freedom. And here we are, in the middle of the United States of America, an affluent place, and we don’t get these rights, and I just don’t get it, and it has to stop. It’ll be interesting to see what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Kidwai, followed by Raoul Gutierrez.
Nick Egbal Kidwai, resident of Newbury Park, director of Concerns, city of Thousand Oaks. Honorable mayor, first of all, I’d like to say that I come from the business world, and if we make a mistake or we have a losing project, we cut our losses. And a mistake has been made, and now we learn one reason why it was. But it can be undone, even though incumbency will be there. But I really implore, and I’ve said it before, in personal emails as well, that Mr. Joel Price should run in the November election, so that, I mean, am I American? Or I’m back in Pakistan. I mean, it’s disgusting, I mean, to have this situation, and he will win. I mean, probably, the probability is he will win, because like I asked my scientist friend, the probability of three councilmembers, three candidates getting the same questions on three was one in 3,352. This is scientific fact. So it was rigged. I mean, you can unrig it to some extent, and I, we do appreciate that you did not make another appointment today, but like somebody told me, the lecture from a councilman that there was a political pandering or stuff like that. I don’t belong to either side, but that’s the American democratic process. Let the voters decide. Why do you have to lecture people from the dais, especially when you folks are failing in your duty? This election ordinance has not been changed since ’98, when Linda Parks was the mayor. I’ve been talking about it for a dozen years, and there’s no hero, a hero, a heroine there. You don’t change anything. In fact, I was promised by the mayor and other people that, and correct me if I’m wrong, that the candidate statements that are obsolete and printed on paper would be on the city’s website on page one, to reduce the cost of the people. I believe it’s not being done. I appreciate the wonderful report by the assistant city clerk. She did a wonderful job, if I might say so. But in the city of Fullerton, where I went to school, and it was mentioned earlier on, it cost $13,000 for the winning candidate. In this city, the mayor dumped $50,000 the first time, then $20,000 again, and probably dump another $100,000 this time. So the other people have no chance, unless they are stupid enough to dump money, or they’re rich. In fact, one of the easiest ways to get name recognition is the sign ordinance, and it’s unbelievable. I was cited to have two signs on my front yard. That’s the ordinance. I mean, and I’ve caught Mr. Ferris doing that, and other candidates, I mean, not themselves, but their committee having these signs, and no changes are made. I mean, you smile. I mean, that’s your job. I mean, you need to take care of business rather than play politics. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidwai. And our last speaker is Mr. Gutierrez.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin and City Councilmembers. Raoul Gutierrez, Thousand Oaks. And I want to dedicate the first minute of my talk in the memory of my friend, Dr. Tom Clancy. Glancy, very sad. I'm reading the agenda tonight and see that we have term limits on the agenda. And it baffles me that the term limit, term, because we have a term limit. It's called going to the polls and voting, and we don't have to wait for four years. We do it every two years, sometimes on a national basis, the other one for the state basis. It doesn't matter. We have the vote. As a matter of fact, I hear countless people just loud the right to vote, how we fight in other countries for the vote, and how we go now, must vote, must vote. Well, fine, you have that opportunity. Terms limit, term limits denies that opportunity in a sense, because you can vote for somebody you like, can do, doing a good job, and term limit says, okay buddy, your vote's no right now after four years or whatever term they decide to. I am definitely against term limits if this is the case here. I would like to see somebody appointed to this council to finish it till November and have him run, of course, for the, for vote. I'm not afraid of votes. That vote's the best thing we've got in this country. Just wish everybody would exercise it. Now, I know that having the term incumbent means a lot. Yeah, it means a lot if you come from a city like Thousand Oaks, a premier city, means nothing in Bell City or Duarte, even in Ochsner has been questioned here. It's a job that you do that is the term limit that you give yourself if you don't do a good job. So don't be afraid of vote, by all means. I wish we appoint somebody anyway till November because I'd like to see four, five people in here, not just four. Really, I want five people. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Okay. You have motion? Councilmember Bill de la Pena?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor Protem.
That's, that's fine. I recommend that we move Resolution A2, which calls for the general special municipal election, one council member term, one vacant council member term, and the term limits measure. And B2, which consolidates the general special municipal election with the statewide general election. And adopting candidate statement guidelines and cost. And that would be it.
I'm gonna, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna add the balance and amended, the balance of the staff recommendation, so that'd be item D and two, three and four.
But not A and B?
No, all of what Ms. Bill de la Pena said, and then I'd conclude or continue with the entire staff recommendation, which is item two, A and B, item three and item four. That's my amendment.
I accept that as a hostile amendment. I will not include that in my motion.
All right. Okay, so you are, you're saying A2, B2, C, but you wanted to skip three and four?
No. I'm including the entire staff recommendation.
I'm talking to the maker of the motion.
This is the amendment.
She...
Yes, is to answer your question. Ms. Bill de la Pena wants to eliminate some of the staff recommendation. That's why I'm amending it so we can pass it in its entirety. So I'm amending the previous motion to include the entire staff recommendation.
Okay. All right, well, okay, so you, I'm just asking for you want to include item 2A where the council members write the argument for the term limits?
I'm putting that in simply because it's a staff recommendation. If council chooses not to do anything, as the city clerk has advised, we do nothing. I'm following the staff recommendation.
Well, that, those are, it says they're optional resolutions.
Right. So that's my amendment. And also three and four. It's the League of Women Voters and the expenditure of monies for candidate materials.
I guess I, let me ask Ms. Lawrence right now. Would this be the time that we make the decision on 2A and B?
These two resolutions are optional. If you, if the decision is to not take a position on writing an argument, then I would suggest, and perhaps the city attorney would agree with me, that they would not take, you would not take action on adopting 2A. 2B is also optional, but if you're going to, if anybody's filing arguments, you need to adopt a resolution to allow rebuttal arguments when we call the election. So if you choose to allow rebuttal arguments, then you would want to adopt 2B for anybody who's doing arguments.
Just for clarification, does A include, if council wishes not to write an argument, does it then go to a recognized group or individual in the community?
If council chooses, they have the first right for an argument against, and if they choose not to, then we would take arguments from bona fide associations of citizens or if an individual citizen wants to file an argument, we would take any arguments and then we would prioritize them in the order that the election code tells us to prioritize, which is an association of citizens and then an individual voter.
It was my understanding that, and maybe this was an error, can that happen if we don't do anything on A?
That's correct.
Okay.
The election code allows if you get other arguments. It just, this particular resolution is just for city council or council or council members to file an argument against. You would adopt that particular resolution.
All right, then, let me, I'm gonna amend my amendment to make, to clarify that. I'm gonna amend it to include 1D. Now, Ms. Lawrence, as I understand it, B could be done even if A isn't. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
2B can be done even?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Those are two separate resolutions.
1D, 2B, three and four. That's my amendment.
Can we vote on my, I know you vote on the amendment first, but his, he adds two separate things that are different, and I think Councilmember Price has questions.
Councilmember Price has a question.
I do, I think it's as clear as mud now. 2A, if we could talk about that for a minute. I think by taking action on it and adopting the recommendations, that leaves the door open to the council later deciding, or an individual council member later deciding to write an argument in opposition. If we don't adopt that now, then that door is shut and we don't, we won't have that option at any time. Is that correct?
I think the city attorney wants to respond to that.
Actually, the city clerk and I were discussing that today to try to muddle our way through the elections code. Based on what we could ascertain, if the council decides affirmatively not to, not to adopt the two resolutions, then that could be taken away from them. But if they hold it in abeyance, they could bring that back. I think that that's what the city clerk and I had concluded. Is that your recollection?
I'd have to double check the code to make sure that it doesn't have to be filed now, but I believe we can do that anytime before July 2.
Right, we could take, we could bring those resolutions back if there's, if there's not an affirmative vote to not do it. In other words, a motion to not allow city council arguments.
Okay, I understand that. But by adopting 2A, if we were to later choose not to write a rebuttal, then we haven't lost the opportunity. If we don't adopt it now, that's potentially an opportunity lost. We can bring it back when?
Well, 2A relates to arguments and 2B relates to rebuttals. They're two separate items.
I'm talking about the argument.
Okay.
2A. I'm sorry, if I used the word rebuttal, I meant argument.
Okay. So your question is that if, if the council adopts the resolution tonight to allow the argument?
Well, if we at least move staff's recommendation, we then have the ability to make that decision later on down the road. We may opt not to, but...
Well, what you could do is if, if you adopt it tonight, then you have the option, obviously, then you write the argument. If you hold it in abeyance, then that option's not taken away from you if you want to bring it back.
Okay, then is there, does there need to be special language to hold it in abeyance?
You can continue it. You can continue it.
I'd be in favor of doing that.
So continuing 2A and B?
You could continue 2A and B, and the city clerk and I can do...
Figure out what, and that, but the decision has to...
I'm trying to remember what the deadline is.
Actually, the rebuttal needs to be done tonight when you call the special election.
Okay. So it's just the argument. It's just the argument that has, that can be, that we can come back for. I don't have the code in front of me, I'm sorry.
2A, you could take action later. 2B for rebuttal arguments for anybody. You need to do that when you call the election.
So that's for anyone to do every rebuttal?
My interest primarily was to secure the right for some other group to weigh in on the term limits issue. Obviously, there's going to be an argument in favor. I just wanted to make sure there was a right for another group or individual to weigh in, so it's, we have both sides of the, of the discussion, so to speak. My own view is while council certainly has the right to do that, speaking for me personally, I don't plan on engaging in that. Let the, let the voters decide, but I do think they need both sides of the argument. So that, that was my interest in A. And the city clerk clarified that, that even though we don't act, that peace remains. But B, as I understand it, we need to take action on that in order to allow any rebuttal, as I understand it. Okay.
Not just city council rebuttal?
Not just city council, any rebuttal. So, so my amendment, again, for clarification, is 1D, which was omitted, that's, that's the impartial analysis, and then 2B, which is allows for rebuttal by anybody, and then three and four, which is the funding and the forum. That's the amendment, which we vote on first prior to the motion.
That's correct.
Okay. So we, so you're leaving out 2A, so that is to allow the public to...
Again, I've been assured by the city clerk that we do not have to pass 2A in order to allow members of the public or organizations to write valid arguments.
So should we continue 2A then?
No. We don't have to take action on it.
Okay, all right. Okay, so comments to the amendment? Vote, please.
The motion carries 4-0.
All right, and then we have a, so then we have vote on the motion? All right, let's vote on the motion.
You know what? I will remove it because of the fact that item 2A has been kept or held in obeyance, abeyance.
So you're removing the...
So that's, or continued.
Right.
Basically. There has no, no action has been taken, which is...
So you're, but we still need to vote on your motion, which is...
Okay, fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, we got through that one. And we are on item 9C, and Mr. Spurgeon will be introducing the staff that are going to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I'm very pleased to present this energy action plan tonight. We have done as a city a lot of energy projects in recent years, including solar installations at various facilities and, and energy-saving projects at pretty much every facility that we own. This energy action plan would further city council's goals to continue with obtaining environmental sustainability for our facilities and, and provide us with policies and direction that will help us focus going into the future. This has been prepared by a team collaboratively across department lines, which is, I think, really exciting. And the team behind me that will be presenting this to you tonight includes Akbar Alakhan, who's our public works analyst. I believe this is the first time he's presented to you at a council meeting. And then others that you recognize, Liz Perez, our facilities manager, Chuck Rogers, our treatment plant superintendent, and John Small is from Municipal Service Center superintendent there. So I'm gonna turn it over to Akbar to begin the presentation and, and talk to you about the, our proposed energy action plan.
Thank you, Jay. Mayor, members of the council, much of the energy action plan was developed by a former intern of ours, Garrett Wong, and if TOTV will show the PowerPoint slide up there. Garrett was a former intern in Public Works Department, and what this really shows, it's a testament to the high quality of interns that the city and the Public Works Department has been able to attract, and more importantly, the importance of the projects that they've been given. So we'd like to acknowledge Garrett's hard work on the energy action plan. So what exactly is it? The, the energy action plan is really just a framework of how staff will address process optimization, the procurement of more efficient alternatives, as well as renewable energy projects in the future. So just like every plan has a goal, so does this one, and here's why goals are important. Just a few years ago, Chuck Rogers to my left came to you in 2009, and he wanted to make Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant 100% energy self-sufficient. And that was a lofty goal then, and just a few years later, Chuck is on the doorstep of achieving that goal with your direction. So currently, Hill Canyon is at 88% energy self-sufficiency. So in a similar manner, we're coming to you with another goal. Reduce energy use at city facilities by 10% by 2017. So that's an average of 2% over the next five years. So Liz will share with you where we currently stand with energy use at city facilities.
Okay, good evening. The first graph we have shows all the major facilities that the city owns, and it's probably no surprise, our two top energy users are City Hall, Civic Arts Plaza, and Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. And as you've heard, Chuck's getting close to 100% renewable energy, which is quite exciting. City Hall, it's important to note that we do have over 200,000 square feet that we air-conditioned, heat and cool, and so when you look at that, it's not really a standard office building. We have things going on here, you know, sometimes 24/7 between theater events, 360 days a year. So it is a high energy use, user, but we're, we're constantly watching that. The next graph, next graph shows you, this actually reflects a national standard that most of your energy use is buildings, and buildings is where you have to really look hard. Just because we're at 61% doesn't mean we aren't doing things. We've done lots of energy, lighting retrofits, council's approved lots of capital projects for energy reduction upgrades in facilities. We're going through several now. We just did one at the Newbury Park Library. We got another one coming up at the Thousand Oaks Library in here. And every time we do a capital project, we're looking at how can we reduce energy use with possibly reducing lighting with LEDs and more efficient equipment. The second phase to try and, to attack that 61% and reduce it is looking at operational changes. So we're constantly looking at all the facilities. Is there ways to reduce energy? Are we having lights on timers that should be on timers, air conditioning spaces that are empty, making sure that we're not doing those kinds of things? So that just gives you an overview of where our costs are. This next slide shows you the magnitude of what 10% can actually give us, and it's no small amount of money. Over the five years, it's over 1 million kilowatt hours of power that we're looking to try and reduce, and it will be about $170,000 over the years. So these are dollars that go back in for other programs, other capital projects that... So these are dollars that go back in for other programs, other capital projects that energy reduction can give us. And I think I'm going to turn it over to Chuck, who's going to go over on the five steps of the energy action plan.
Sure, thanks, Liz. First thing we're going to do to help achieve these goals is to establish our energy management team. We've done that, and like Liz and Akbar says, the first time we've ever really sat down and started working together on that. We think there's going to be a great synergy that comes out of that. We've got our energy policy. We're always exploring sources of funding here at the City of Thousand Oaks, and I think we've been very good over the years of getting a lot of money that should have been coming back to us in the first place. As you may recall, Southern California Edison, every time you pay your electricity bill, there's a certain portion of that that goes to the type of projects that the city's done, whether it's solar projects, whether it's conservation or optimization projects. You know, we all think very clearly, this is the type of money that we should be out seeking and bringing back here to the city, and I think we've been very effective. At Hill Canyon, we're over $2 million, and probably closer to 2.5 million doing that. Certainly going to track and monitor what we do, and we've been doing this for some time. And the final one, and a very challenging one, is engage the community through outreach and education. I think this could be challenging, because, you know, to be honest with you, we have a great community. We have a lot of smart people in this community, and, you know, we want to find a program that's appropriate for them and share with them the best information we can. Here's some pictures of our projects over the years. Of course, Hill Canyon, the cogeneration and solar, some good news there, 18 million kilowatts since we started this a little over five years ago. Renewable energy has been produced through the solar and the cogeneration. Just last month, you know, we're at 88%, and my boss, Mark Watkins, used to tell me, you need to round up on those things, and we're going to call it 90%, which is often close to 100, isn't it, Mark? So anyway, we're getting there. $75,000 worth of savings and revenue came into Hill Canyon last month, and the fog and other material that was being brought in, as well as $40,000 of cogeneration savings. So it was a great month at Hill Canyon, and I think there are many more ahead of us here. A couple other ones, you're familiar with the LEED certified transportation center. Here we had a beautiful opportunity to do something right the first time, instead of having to go back and fix it like we do so many other things. The city council gave great leadership on that, and we have a wonderful building out there. I was just up recently at the 401, 403 Solar Array. This is a nice project, and, you know, in all fairness to solar, it doesn't always get accurately portrayed on return of investment and other things properly, and I'll tell you why. Because solar always produces during the middle of the day when electricity is the most expensive. We're about ready to enter the period of time from June 1 to October 1. Those hours between 12 and 6, which solar always does well in Southern California and Thousand Oaks, because the sun is always shining between June and October in Thousand Oaks. So it's really, that's a nice project up there, you know, it's got a little net metering aspect of it, so you're, you know, you're going to be able to, I think, do real well there. And of course, the direct access that we've had for over the last year here, in which we provided 16 of our 17 buildings here, renewable energy. We are one of the few cities in the United States that's doing this at this time, buying this much renewable energy. Again, it's wind power from Iowa and some other states, and also another cogeneration project in Washington. Our energy management, oh, here we go, I'm sorry, this is a slide that's kind of popped in there. Some of the same stuff I told you, over $750,000 in energy savings since 2007. It's probably more than that. It's just hard at times to quantify the solar savings, but I think that's a good conservative number. And of course, the transportation center, almost $20,000 worth of energy savings that we don't have to pay for, so a good thing there. Our energy management team, John Akbar, John Adams, you know him, John Brooks, Liz, myself, John Smallson, Jay Spurgeon, you know, we're working together really for the first time, and we're happy about that. You know, we want to do a better job, and we think we can do a better job, there's no question about that, but we also need your help as well. And if you have any ideas about, you know, how we can do things better, as you're out seeing other cities and what they're doing, we want to steal their best ideas and implement them here at the City of Thousand Oaks, so anything you can bring to us is always very much appreciated. And we're also opening it up to everybody for, you know, our 400 employees and the citizens of this Thousand Oaks. Everybody's got an opinion on energy, and we'd like to hear yours, so I'll pass it over to John Small right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chuck. The first step in developing new projects or internal practices to save energy is to have a centralized energy policy. This energy action plan is that centralized policy. If approved, the energy action plan will serve as a central policy under which future projects will be evaluated by. This will include the continuance of establishing a centralized energy policy on such items as alternative fuel vehicle purchases, which with your support has resulted in the city standing, being recognized as one of the top 100 green fleets in America. Also, I'm happy to say that 53% of our fleet is alternatively fueled at this time. We'll continue to pursue LED lighting as long as it is economical, makes sense, and has a demonstrated payback. We'll also continue environmentally preferable purchasing, where staff will pursue environmentally preferred products if the item is functional and priced competitively to its conventional counterpart. Next slide, please. The energy projects that make environmental and economic sense still require funds for the initial investment. These funds will be explored through alternative sources of funding, which will include revolving fund, using initial seed money from energy projects paid back from energy savings, some of these other items I had mentioned earlier. Also, local government loan programs. They'll also be considered through various state, federal loans available with low interest rates, potentially paid back from energy savings. Again, the energy action plan does not commit the city to any of these. Rather, it states that the energy management team will look into these and other similar options. To know how much you've improved, you have to know where you are. I think the city has a really good sense of our direction, where we've been, and some of the savings we've already incurred. The city tracks electricity and gas use through its utility bills received from SCE and Southern California Gas. In addition, the city voluntarily reports greenhouse gas emissions to the climate registry. The city will continue to use these two methods of tracking to monitor progress towards the 10% reduction goal. Thank you. Akbar?
Well, SCE does have a new program which allows public agencies to generate power off-site and then use those credits towards other accounts. So before this, you had to have a lot of onsite use and a lot of onsite generation all at the same place, and I think a good example of that is the treatment plant, where you had tremendous amounts of energy being used and a lot of energy being generated at the same time. Now, under this new model, we can generate renewable energy in a remote area and then apply those credits towards a, an account, much like City Hall. So with that in mind, this really has opened up the gamut here for a lot of opportunities, and some of the potential solar sites that we've been discussing among staff are the Hill Canyon Road, city-owned parcel there. That's a 60-acre parcel that's in discussion currently. The Municipal Service Center, as part of the expansion that's happening there. Various water reservoir sites, some open space areas, and then also partnerships with other public agencies. So while renewable energy projects are fun and exciting, we still need to pick the low-hanging fruit, and a lot of that is really just changing our habits, conserving and reducing demand. And the second part of that is modernizing older and inefficient equipment. So while renewable energy projects do catch people's eyes, we really need to focus on the priorities here. So with that, staff is available for questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Fox?
The staff report actually points out a couple of, I think, important statistics. You touched on a few, but if you could just very briefly go over again on pages 51 and 52, just the extent of which we've achieved, you know, really some remarkable achievements in the area of energy conservation. There we, we've been recognized a number of times with respect to being a green city. Just for the benefit of the community, you guys did a good job going through it, but if you could just, you know, maybe rattle off a couple of those stats for the record, I think it might be helpful.
Certainly. And again, a lot of these things that we've done to date have been in the absence of an energy action plan, so what we can accomplish under having an approved energy action plan can only further this endeavor. But we have done a number of things, some notables here. We've enrolled 16 of our 17 top counts in direct access, as Chuck mentioned. We've, we participated in LED holiday light strand exchanges, 2006 through 2008, participated with nine other cities and the county of Ventura to support the energy finance program. We pioneered one of the first power purchase agreements in the region, which was at Hill Canyon Waste Water Treatment Plant in 2008, and we were awarded the LEED Gold Certification for the Transportation Center also in 2008. So we have done a number of laudable things, and under this energy action plan, we continue to, to...
Just to kind of carry on with that.
Exactly.
The report indicates that for the city's efforts, it's been named one of the top 50 greenest cities in the country by Popular Science Magazine, going back to 2008. Of the city's 203 vehicles, 53% are powered by alternative fuels. At the treatment plant, 65% of the, of reduction in energy since 2000 has become an international model for energy efficiency. And then finally, the city's achieved an overall 35% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, verified by California Climate Registry. So, you know, when we talk about environmental protection, it's just not open space. We're doing it in a variety of areas, and the staff really needs to be commended, because I know you initiated a number of these programs. From time to time, I kid a little bit about them because they're not necessarily the most interesting, but the bottom line is, is we're doing a very, very good job there, and you guys need to be commended. Very good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Price? Make a comment, then?
Well, I, I for one don't know what Councilmember Fox is talking about. I find this very exciting. As you were speaking and talking about the, was it 18 million kilowatts that we produced at the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, I found myself looking at my, my own app and realized that I've made more on my roof today than I used, so that's a good day. I understand solar, it's great. I'd like to see more of it. You guys are doing a great job of putting this blueprint together, and I for one want to see more of it here in the City of Thousand Oaks, so...
Thank you. No cards, but Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Just to clarify, you say that the city will consider instituting a, I think it was Mr. Small who mentioned the payback policy. The policy, is it right now to have it on projects longer than five to 10 years, or is that something really new?
This is an ongoing practice whenever, looking at alternative energy sources, and this is just to further establish that it's included as part of this centralized energy policy that will consider the payback time for everything from small LED lighting to large solar projects.
I think that is very important, because it makes a big difference in whether there is enough public support for some, for a project like this. What I also really, really like is that you will provide the council with updates with real specific benchmarks and data that we can analyze and look at. So I think this is a wonderful improvement, and it's a wonderful plan, and I congratulate you on a job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just make a quick comment. I do find it very exciting, unlike Councilmember Fox. But, you know, to see how far you've gone actually without this plan, and this really is the next step, to have a coordinated effort and put together this energy action plan. So I have two questions. The first is, 10% does not seem that lofty considering what we've done, and is that kind of the reason that it's not that lofty, because of how much we've done already?
That perhaps might be true. I mean, you're evaluating this in, relative to what we've accomplished already, which have been some pretty amazing things. 10% still is significant, as you saw by the kilowatt reduction. That is going to require some, some innovations on our part to introduce more modernized equipment, and obviously with limited funding, that becomes even more difficult to do. So 10% is a, it is a, still a recognizable goal, and it's something that we think we can achieve.
Okay. The other thing that you mentioned is the remote solar sites, and so have we taken care of those high transmission costs with the net metering, or have we, like, passed that problem?
Do you mind if I answer that one? Since I went "um" long enough? Looks like a Buddhist monk there. I think so. You know, the best projects, solar projects, as far as I'm concerned, continue to be onsite. The thing that, the advantage that you get by doing these bigger ones is you get a utility scale and potentially a power purchase agreement, which would allow you to take into account whatever the transmission cost is for Edison. And that seems fair, they get paid for creating the lines and shipping the electricity around. But if we can do a big enough one, Mayor, we can get a price that's going to be good, and we could possibly project that price out for 20 years for electricity, and that would be a good thing. As we started talking to other cities and other people about it, just a lot of excitement about it, because we really are one of the only people around that actually have property that isn't being used for something. The Hill Canyon site down there, that city council purchased many years ago from Carol Burnett, it's perfect. It's right next to a lot of, you know, ways to tap into the electrical grid, so that could be potentially, you know, one of the projects that's going to make a lot of sense here in the future. It's nice to have that option, though, so hope to answer that.
All right. Well, very good and great job. Looking forward to hearing how you guys accomplish the next goal. Do we have a motion on that? Councilmember Price?
I will gladly move staff's recommendation.
All right, vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, we are on item nine E, and that is the elimination of nine positions. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies, lady. Elimination of nine positions in fiscal year 2012-13 budget, and Mark Watkins, our Assistant City Manager, is going to be presenting the report. Mr. Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor Irwin. As city council, and I think the community is well aware, as of February 1, 2012, we no longer have a redevelopment agency that was eliminated by the state, and therefore we are forced to react to that, and we need to reduce some costs. We have both direct and indirect costs that were charged to our redevelopment agency. Approximately seven full-time equivalent positions, just under $1 million in direct costs, those are people that were working directly on redevelopment within the Community Development Department, and then just under half a million dollars in indirect costs, and those are our cost allocation costs. It includes people from city attorney's office, city manager, city clerk, finance, and that type of thing. On April 10, the city council approved the reduction of funding from three positions of indirect costs, and that was one position from the city attorney's office, one from city clerk, and one from the finance department. And tonight, we're asking city council to approve the elimination of six additional positions for a total of nine positions. The six additional positions include a planning division manager, two senior planners, a combination building inspector, an assistant analyst, and an administrative clerk. This will generate about $1.1 million in savings out of almost the 1.5 that we need as part of the redevelopment law. We do get $250,000 in annual administrative costs, and staff will be back to council on June 26 to present the 2012-2013 budget and to show council how we're going to make up that final gap and show that we do have a balanced budget for next year. Of these nine positions, the first three the city council eliminated were vacant. These next six are all filled. We are trying to accommodate as many people as we can, but even under the best-case scenario, there will be layoffs. And so, for example, on the administrative clerk, that position has already been moved, and there was a vacant administrative clerk position in the Public Works Department, but there's still five other positions that we're determining how to accommodate. Since there will be actual layoffs, we also include a severance proposal here, and that severance proposal is on a sliding scale from 10 weeks to 22 weeks for employees based upon how many years of service they have. That's consistent with TO's prior dedication to its workforce and trying to provide as soft a landing as possible for those who are going to be laid off. And so with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? No questions? We have one public speaker, Mr. Nick Kidway. Kidway?
Nick Kidway, resident of Nibery Park, director of concerns, citizen of Thousand Oaks, honorable mayor, city council. I am disappointed, again, that the council still plays a smoke-and-mirror game with the headline of nine layoffs. I must say that I've been friends and worked with the people that handle the redevelopment work, so on a personal level, I really am concerned, and my sympathies, and hoping that they will get a transfer or an outside job. get a transfer or an outside job, still apply. But the facts have to be put on the table regardless of personal feelings, and the facts are that the city was overcharging the redevelopment agency in order to get free money. And that's what was, has been the attitude of the city, that this is free money that goes and is wasted in Sacramento, so the more money we get over here, and if we give it to some of our boys and girls, what's wrong with that? It's completely wrong. In fact, I have the report from 2007. At that time, the debt of the redevelopment agency stood at $81 billion, or $81 billion. And the city's debt is around $150 million, which, who's going to pay? I mean, our kids and kids, and the money has just been misspent and used. If the city, if the TO TV can show my proposal, which is an old proposal but still alive, and I, my proposal is a 30% across-the-board cut, that would be for people that make $150,000 and more. The Assistant City Manager's base is 260 and makes around $400,000 from what the Star says. Our governor makes $173,000. I mean, if $173,000 is good enough for the governor, $150,000 should be good enough for any assistant manager, right? How about a smile? Thank you. A cut except for police and library. I mean, I have that there. 30% cut in perks, like free cars. We've discovered the misuse of credit cards, which I haven't found in this city yet. Access holidays. I mean, we need to do something about that. I mean, it's unbelievable. The furloughs, I mean, that is a complete hogwash. I cannot believe that in the last election, it wasn't made a campaign issue. Thank you for letting me speak. Hopefully, I'll adopt the 30-30 even in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's with some trepidation that I will move staff's recommendation.
Comments to the motion? Motion carries for zero.
Committee, Commission, Board reports there are none. Item 11, City Council's successor agency to Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency reports, and we have item 11A, Thousand Oaks Plan to Assist Schools/Sites Annual Project List. John Adams.
Good evening, Mayor Erwin, council members. This evening, I'm going to make a brief presentation tonight on the agenda on the city's acting as a successor agency. Back in 1994, the city, with the redevelopment agency, NCEUSD, entered into the TO-PAS agreement, which is the Thousand Oaks Plan to Assist School Sites. Annually, part of the requirement of that agreement is to provide a project list for each fiscal year. As one of the attachments shows, this was provided by the CBEUSD in December of 2011. Because of the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, this item was put on hold until after the adoption of the ROPS. This process is part of the redevelopment agency or the city acting as a successor agency. So in front of you tonight is the annual adoption of that project list. These are projects identified by CBEUSD and using tax increment money as part of their pass-through payments, and those reimbursements will be made as the projects are completed and documented with receipts and backup. So tonight, the project list is in front of you. Staff's available for any questions.
Questions of staff? Have a speaker, Mr. Kidway?
Good evening for the last time here. I did not want to late speak, but since I'm here, I consider it a bonus card. Thank you. Think I saw the superintendent of schools here, but I guess he didn't want to stick I would like, I forgot, but I would like you folks to look on the Star website on the other issue and read OP's comments. I mean, it's unbelievable that we have a person like OP in this community, and he is very concerned about redevelopment. In fact, the obligations that you have, they are on the internet, and I've shown the link to some of the people, and they said, "Mr. Kidway, why are they so small?" I mean, I mean, hardly anybody, first you have to twist them around, and then so. In fact, along the same vein, the Oversight Board originally was meeting at 2:00 PM in the middle of the day. I mean, if I feel upset, I mean, it is, I mean, it costs me money. I mean, people have billable hours, I have sales commissions that I'm losing to come to this, and then the TO TV can show the overhead, that's the front page of the TO TV. Thank you. 3:00 PM in the boardroom, and because of one of the members, it has gone to 3:00 PM from 2:00 PM. And then they had to finish the meeting because they are, all the bureaucrats, they wanted to leave at 5:00, and one of the ladies went for a flight. Again, TO TV, redevelopment underscore hotline at dof.ca.gov. They're open for complaints, and they, unlike the city, they're not throwing these in the trash can. They have a whole file, and the more complaints that they have, they think it's more legitimate, and they are pursuing them. And their bonus, that's the debt that I talked about. This is the booklet that made Chris Norby famous and helped us defeat these evil redevelopment agencies. I've been talking about this TO-PAS agreement for a long time. I used to have a 5-cent, no, 10-cent double cone at Rite Aid or Thrifty. It's gone now, it's a dollar or something like that. But a double-dip cone is fine, but this is what it is. This thing is a double dipping because the money is made up by the state as a whole, and that's one of the reasons the state is in such a mess.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Can we have a motion, please? Councilmember Price.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will move staff's recommendation.
All right. That is staff recommendation one and two.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. That would include numbers one and two.
All right. Vote, please. Motion carries for zero.
Councilmember Issues and Recommendations Follow-up Reports on Meetings and Conferences, there are none. City Manager Report. Oh, that is the right answer. And can I have the city attorney please announce the closed session?
Yes, this closed session, conference with labor negotiators, city-designated representatives, Assistant City Manager Mark Watkins, Finance Director John Adams, and Human Resources Director Gary Rogers, Employee Organization Senior Management Association SMA, and Thousand Oaks Management Association TOMA pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57.6, and unlikely that I'll have anything to report afterwards.
On the public notice, how much has to be read or none? Nothing has to be read on item 15? All right. And this evening, we are going to be adjourning our meeting in honor of Councilmember Tom Glancy. We began our city council meeting this evening with a moment of silence to recognize and remember the passing of our city council member and dear friend, Dr. Thomas Glancy. A 32-year resident of Thousand Oaks, Tom was originally appointed to the Thousand Oaks City Council in 2005 and elected to a full term in 2008. He served as mayor in 2009 and planning commissioner from 1999 to 2005. Tom submitted his resignation on May 11 due to health issues and peacefully left us on May 18. As a resident, Tom cherished his community. He appreciated the involvement of citizens and the dedication of city officials and staff that made our community a wonderful place to live, work, and play. Since his early days as a planning commissioner in 1999, Tom was known for his tireless preparation and affable demeanor. He wanted to contribute his knowledge and energy in building, to building a premier city for future generations. During his seven years on the city council, Tom held posts on 19 different committees at the local, regional, and national level. He was a key advocate for the renovation of the Oaks Mall, Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, funding for the 101-23 interchange project, local control over speed limits, water conservation, open space acquisition, and good government. Tom was a 25-year member of the Rotary Club of Thousand Oaks, served on the Conejo Valley Days Committee from 1990 to 2000, and the Southeast Ventura County YMCA Board from 1990 to 2002. Tom was a captain in the United States Navy and retired after 30 years of service. In addition, he founded and maintained a highly successful local Thousand Oaks dental practice for many years. Our community has lost a great leader. Tom's caring personality, tireless work ethic, and sharp instincts have been tremendous assets. He was a friend to citizens throughout the city and enthusiastically represented the city council at countless community events where his warm demeanor and infectious smile represented our city well. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, I send our deepest condolences to Tom's wife, Karen, and the entire Glancy family during this difficult time. Tom will be deeply missed by his family, his friends, and the city he called home. Good night, everybody.